I'd like to call the November 19th, 2013 meeting of the Planning Board to order. The Board will be considering tonight's agenda and the following order. Number one, approval of the minutes from September 17th, 2013. Approval of the minutes from the October 15th Planning Board meeting. Number three, Seize Gourmet Market Site Plan Approval Extension. Number four, Old Hayfield Lane Private Road Review, followed by public comment on items not on tonight's agenda, followed by adjournment. So first of all, the approval of the minutes, and this will be from the September 17th meeting. Any comments, any questions about those minutes? No? Good to me. Okay, then would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 17th.
September 1st, second? Second. Carol Anne, any discussion on that? No discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Then, let's now do the approval of the minutes from October 15th. Any comments or questions about those minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion on those minutes from October 15th?
Sure, I have a comment. They were good and they were helpful in preparing for this meeting, so thank you, Haromi. And I'd like to make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Liza. Second? Anyone?
Joe, second.
Oh, thank you, I didn't see you, Joe. We should have. Any discussion on those meetings? All those in favor?
Wasn't at the meetings.
All those opposed and abstaining?
Abstaining.
There we go, thank you.
Could you mark me as abstaining of the previous ones? May I ask about the other meeting?
One extension for the September 17th? And there were two extensions?
Two extensions for the October 15th.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Seize Gourmet Market Site Plan Approval Extension. Mike Concanon is requesting an extension of the site plan approval granted November 20th, 2012, for Seize Gourmet Market, a new retail, 28-seat restaurant and office building to be located at 349 Ocean House Road. The request will be reviewed under Section 19-9-4, B4, Site Plan Extension.
I recuse myself originally for this, so I'm not going to do that again.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Would the applicant's representative? Well, this has been placed on the consent agenda, so if any Board member would like to discuss this application, then a motion will need to be made to put it on the regular agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to put this onto the regular agenda? Okay. Otherwise, then would anyone like to make a motion for the Board to consider? Thank you, Carol Anne.
Motion for the Board to consider, be it ordered that based on the request submitted and facts presented, the request of Mike Concanon for Seize Gourmet Market located at 349 Ocean House Road, for a one-year extension of the Planning Board approval granted November 20, 2012, be approved with an extension to November 20, 2014.
Motion by Carol Anne, second? Liza? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? And we have one member recusing, so that'd be six. The next item on our agenda is, Old Hayfield Lane Private Road Review. Stephanie Boggs is proposing a private road to be constructed within the paper street of Elizabeth Road, located north of Reef Road, to create access to a back lot located at the end of Elizabeth Road. The new private road would be named Old Hayfield Lane. The application was deemed complete, and a public hearing has been scheduled for this evening. The plan will be reviewed under Section 16-2-3 of the subdivision ordinance. This application will be addressed in the following format. The town planner will provide an overview, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Then, the public is welcome to comment on the application. After the hearing, the Board may begin discussions. And then we will conclude with a motion for the Board to consider. Maureen, do you have an overview for us?
I do, and I'm gonna pass this out. The applicant already has a copy. This is intended to be an aid for the Board, and if you don't find it to be an aid, feel free to ignore it. But the application tonight is for a private road to be built in a paper street, Elizabeth Road, to access a back lot. The private road standards are the same as the town local road standards, and the applicant has asked for some waivers of those standards. So, on the bottom of the page, I have represented, basically, the town standard is for a 22-foot-wide paved road with an 18-inch-deep gravel base, the entire width of 22 feet. The applicant's proposal is on the top of this page, and that is showing an 18-foot-wide gravel base, 18 inches deep, 14 feet of that would be paved, and then there'd be two-foot-wide gravel shoulders on either side. And they're also shifting it five feet off-center right-of-way, all of that intended to retain four existing trees. At your last meeting, the Board asked town staff to provide a recommendation on how much a road you need to build in order to satisfy a certain level of expected volume. And, not surprisingly, the position of town staff has in the past and continues to be that they don't support waivers. They like to adhere to the town standard almost exclusively. So what you got as a recommendation was, basically, a 22-foot-wide gravel base where the actual traveled surface would be 18 feet wide, travel paved surface, and then two-foot-wide gravel shoulders on either side. And that would require, more than likely, the removal of four existing mature trees. When the applicant received the staff's comments, they approached the fire chief and suggested a compromise, which would include going back to the applicant's original proposal, which is at the top of the page, and also potentially limiting the use of the private road to just one lot, and also allowing, requiring that any house that was gonna be constructed with access off of this road have to have a sprinkler in it. The sprinkler requirement in place of meeting standards is something you have done before. You can't just unilaterally decide that people have to have sprinklers in their homes, but if you were to do that as part of a waiver of width, or in some cases, you've done it in order to compensate for an inadequate amount of water supply to fight a fire. So, that's an option that's in front of you tonight. Okay?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So, the option at the top is for access to the lot in that one house on that, and the existing house that's already accessed from the gravel road.
The option at the top is for a private road approval, and that would provide access for any lot that had adequate frontage on that private road. So that has, there's no limit to that access. The Board could choose to limit it.
Oh, but any new houses would need to be sprinkled?
Yes. Or you could do that, or you could do both. And the fire chief is attending the meeting this evening, I should've mentioned that earlier. I expected that you might have questions for him, and asked him if he would be here, and he's very generously agreed to sit in, and so he's available for questions.
Any more questions for Maureen on this? Then, at this point, I'd like the applicant, if you could please summarize any changes that have been made?
Sure. Thank you. My name is John Mitchell, Mitchell Associates, and I represent Stephanie Boggs for this private road application. I would like to, before I get into my presentation, there's just one minor correction on this, Maureen. What we had proposed was a 14-foot-wide paved surface with two-foot-wide grass shoulders. That's what we have in our application.
So there would be gravel, but then there would be cement on top?
There would be gravel on the base, but grass on the top, correct. The changes that we have made to the plan since our last submission are all documented on the October 31st letter that we should have for you. Going down that list very quickly, all the plans have been stamped by a professional engineer. On page two, the Board, if you remember, asked us to look into the number of lots that could be developed along Old Hayfield Lane. And we provided, in your packet, I believe it's the last page, an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven exhibit with the lots, the potential lots that could be developed off Old Hayfield Lane. There are a total of four, which include the Mr. and Mrs. Hamm's lot, which is on the east side of the proposed road. There are two lots on the west side that are part of the Shore Acres subdivision and that are grandfathered. And then the fourth lot would be the Boggs lot, in the rear, the four-and-a-half-acre rail lot. So those are the four potential lots that could be developed off of this roadway. Actually, there are three additional, in addition to the Hamm's property. We have documented the meets and bounds for the proposed turnaround, those are shown on the plan. We've added a number of notes, notes five through nine, as well as plan references. These refer to previous amended subdivision plans, legal rights of the Boggs lot, and renaming of the Elizabeth Road to Old Hayfield Lane. All of that information has been documented on sheet two. At the time, unfortunately, we were not able to connect with Mr. and Mrs. Hamm regarding the screening of the roadway. And what we had shown on your plan, the plans that you have, are plants, basically, of edge of lilacs that we proposed. Shortly after we submitted the plans, I did speak with Matt Hamm, and we talked about what he would like to see in terms of screening, and that was a fence. He would like to see an eight-foot-high fence. So we have revised the plans, the ones that are on the PowerPoint this evening. We've removed the plants and we've added a fence, an eight-foot-high solid wood fence, which extends from his driveway up to the existing oak trees. And those are on the plan, and the note that is located right here that refers to that, refers to the fence. And we revised, a minor revision is that we revised the Planning Board's signature block. As I mentioned, the turnaround easement is also included in your packet. There's a meets and bounds written description, as well as maintenance agreement for the turnaround. And the last item is monumentation, and the monumentation was on the previous plan, but Maureen asked us to document it in our cover letter, which I did. Those are the, that's the extent of the revisions that we made to the plans. And now with regard to the roadway, I just wanna mention a few points. Aside from the stated purpose of establishing legal rights for the applicant to access the back lot, the physical design of this roadway has always been, right from the very beginning, is to make this roadway fit the topography as closely as possible. In other words, to minimize the disturbance of the land, to minimize the cut and fill, minimize blasting. And we feel that we have done that. The other really strong point that we, our goal, was to retain the four oak trees that are all within the right-of-way of this paper street. This, of course, is in addition to providing a safe means of access to the rail lot, as well as providing emergency access. We therefore proposed the 18-foot-wide section, road section, that consists of 14-foot-wide travelway with two-foot-wide grass shoulders on either side. We, I just wanna remind the Board that we talked about this at length at the workshop meeting. And we talked about examples that have, that this Board has approved in the past that are very similar to this section. We talked about the waivers that would be required in order to accomplish this. And it was our opinion that the Board, or the majority of the Board, if not all of you, were agreed with this approach, in that you provided us with a direction to go to minimize the roadway, minimize the amount of pavement. So that's what we did. These oak trees, there are photographs in the, I believe, the original booklet we submitted. This is a view from Reef Road looking up, the Hamm's driveway. The oak trees are at the top of the knoll, and as you can see, they're mature oak trees. They're very large. There they are again. These are the three, and then there's one further down the paper street. So that, you know, basically, the reason why we're asking for the waivers, in other words, to offset the center line of the roadway five feet, to reduce the traveled way, was to, basically, preserve these oak trees. If we are, if we have to widen this roadway to town standards, it more than likely will really get into the roots of these trees, and eventually, they'll die. These oak trees also provide a very nice separation between Mr. and Mrs. Hamm's rear yard, they have a deck out on the rear yard, as well as a visual screen to their property. So, as I mentioned, that this is what, basically, drove our request to, for these waivers. We wanna do the right thing, I'm sure you, the Board, wants us to do the right thing. And we hope that the Board will agree to reduce the, allow us to reduce the standards. And, you know, we're in favor of, you know, having the condition of requiring the house to be sprinkled in order to get these waivers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, we're gonna open this up for questions. Well, actually, yeah. We actually wanna open up for the public comment, and then the Board will come. So at this time, would you like to approach, and you have any comments?
Thank you, Matthew Hamm, 6 Reef Road. As John was saying, Dr. Meddy and Dr. Boggs have rights as landowners that support their ability to access the land in the back. And so my wife, Dawn, and I are, you know, we're supportive of that, we understand it. And we also have been very grateful to the Boggs and the Meddys for spending time with us, very transparent conversations. I think it was evident tonight from the conversation that John had earlier, that describes our interests in a very transparent manner. From our perspective, the way our house is situated on our lot, if we were to see the private road be developed, and it was wider than 14 feet, and the presumption that these mature trees actually would have to be taken down, it would have a dramatic detriment to our privacy, as well as to probably the value of our home. The backside of our house really would become very highly visible. So we're very concerned about that, and we think that Dr. Boggs and Dr. Meddy have bent over backwards to be transparent, as I said before, as well as to be accommodating to us. So we're supportive of the 14-foot-wide road, and we would hope the Planning Board would look at this in a favorable light as well. A couple of the points that we just wanted to make is that we're, we understand that Dr. Meddy and Dr. Boggs may or may not activate this paper road in the future. We also appreciated the fact that they've worked with us in terms of trying to accommodate with additional privacy by having a fence, by also working towards some other plantings that we might want to put up. So again, we're trying to, I think, do the right thing and be reasonable about this in all cases. We would just ask the Planning Board to consider this and support this with 14 feet for the road. And once again, we wanna thank the Dr. Boggs and Dr. Meddy for their, for their support of our needs, as well as supporting their needs as landowners. So, thank you.
Would you like to approach, or would you like to approach when called upon?
I'll just wait, if you have questions, I'll be here.
Okay. Then, at this point, if we have any questions as a Board, the public hearing is over, and we can start asking questions. John, I do have a question for you, before we get into the road. I was looking at the map that you did provide for us, and as I look at this map, it's part of the materials submitted, and I believe it might come into the conversation about how many building lots may be developed. As I was looking at this map, I know the Meddy, no, Dr. Boggs's lot is 4.5 acres, right at the top.
Correct.
And I looked at the Hamm's online, and it says it's 1.49. Could you describe, then, I had questions on, not the Boggs's lot, not on the Pryor's lot, but this red to the right of Elizabeth Lane? Is that supposed to represent, and if you could just tell me exactly what that represents?
It represents, actually, up until, what, a couple months ago, was it? It was only the front portion of what I'm showing as the Hamm's lot. And just in the last couple months, they acquired a rear, some land to the rear. So this map reflects their current ownership.
So you're saying that that entire area is 1.49 acres?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that 1.4 is current.
It appears that prior to acquiring that land, it was around, was it 0.7?
Yes.
And then you acquired 0.79?
Yes.
Okay.
But 1.49, and I bring that up because this is part of the materials submitted, and it just doesn't look like that is 1.49 when you compare it to the Boggs property of 4.5. So I question the accuracy of the map, first of all. It almost appears like this was just hand-drawn in.
It was hand-drawn.
Okay. It doesn't appear that, okay.
This is the best I could do.
Yes.
You know, this is a reduction of the original subdivision plan. I didn't have the actual deed to go by when I drew this.
So that was my first question on this material submitted, about how accurate this picture might be. So it's possible that this may not actually be a depiction of 1.49 acres.
Yeah, but this exhibit intends to illustrate only the, just the number of lots.
And I had a question on that, too.
Okay.
My other question was, when I started looking at the Hamm property, I was trying to see if it was also part of Shore Acres, and I came to no conclusion. I can't conclude one way or the other. So I looked at the lot next door to them, and that lot is part of Trundy, and so is the lot next to that one, and so on. So I don't feel 100% that this is part of Shore Acres. I have that question. And the last point I would make is, the Hamm's are not in front of us. It's the Boggs that are in front of us. So with all my questions in regards to the lot to the right side of Elizabeth Road, I do not feel comfortable saying that the lot colored in red shows a record that can be served by the private road in Old Hayfield Lane without returning to the Planning Board for approval. I don't feel comfortable using this map or saying that that is accurate. And I don't know if now, with the Board, having heard this information, if you also have any comments, or also feel that, that note, that these lots can be served on this private road without coming back for Planning Board approval, you're comfortable with, you're neutral on, or you have any questions? Does anyone have any comments, or?
I just wanna make sure I understand what you're asking. You're saying that all three lots, you're not comfortable, or just the one with the Hamm's?
No. Just the Hamm, we'll call it the Hamm lot, even though that's probably not the real size of it.
Isn't the Hamm, the Hamm property now, was shown in the Hamm property and Nichols Trust property, on your plan, aren't they also situated to the Boggs lot, in that they're, but the subdivision plan property, that they're not part of them, but we've decided that they have access to the road that's shown on the subdivision plan, even though they're not part of the subdivision parcels?
My understanding, and Maureen can jump in, my understanding was, the Boggs hired an attorney who was able to do a title search to bring it back and say that lot was part of Shore Acres, and no one has done that title search to say that, yes, the Hamm lot is part of Shore Acres, they have access to that road, and the Hamm's are not in front of us. So I'm just saying, I don't feel comfortable saying that the note on this map, that no one would have to come back to the Planning Board for approval on those lots, I don't feel comfortable using that.
Well, I may misremember the attorney's letter, but I thought they concluded that the Boggs parcel is basically that shown on this subdivision plan, which was not a subdivision lot, but it's shown on the plan. Partly decided as adjacent plan that we have rights in that road. I think the Boggs parcel probably stands in the same footing that's shown on its plan, albeit John's drawing in the back in the far side of the lot.
I would say, no, I would differ, I would say this is accurately depicted, the Boggs lot and the Pryor's lot, but the Hamm's lot is not an accurate depiction.
You understand that the Hamm's have access off?
The Hamm's do, but you're saying that any of this can be subdivided without going in front of the Planning Board?
Not subdivided.
Well, would have access.
Right.
The lots.
And the Hamm's already have access.
Right, they already do.
Right. So, I'm sorry, you questioned- So, I'm sorry, your question then is what? Do the Hamm's have rights to this private road?
Well, I just did figure it was an accurate description, and that if we're looking at, we're going to get into the whole discussion of how many lots truly can be subdivided, or how many lots can be put into this land? And it just looks like there's a lot of land there, and there's truly not a lot.
Yeah, and again, this exhibit was, did not intend to show the amount of land. I mean, the Hamm's have one lot, they can't subdivide it any further than what it is today. You know, it may be a little off, but that's, it was just to represent, there are four lots that have rights to the proposed roadway without having to come back to the planning board for approval.
Okay, so the Hamm's lot is already, has access?
Yeah.
Right, it already has, right.
This is their driveway, right there.
Right.
In the paper street.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear that there's not that much land, and that there's no confusion that there's the possibility of any subdivision of the lots, the Hamm's lot, or that there could be further houses to that.
That's correct.
Okay. Liza?
It's, the lot is, is, it's too small. It doesn't meet the 80,000 square foot minimum lot size that would be required to subdivide it.
So a question for you, John, is, is that land that they bought behind them from the Elizabeth Nichols Trust not grandfathered as a legal lot? It's not?
Stephen, do you know the history of?
Yes, Maureen.
My connection is in there.
Okay, great.
The Nichols lot was a corner-shaped lot. So it has frontage on Reef Road, it runs all the way to the back, and then it went across the back of the Hamm's lot. When that lot was sold, the new owner sold to the Hamm's the land that was actually behind the Hamm's existing lot. But there's no subdivision grandfathering that we were able to find there. It was just, the lot that the Hamm's have was just a lot that was carved off by someone in the past, it's not part of the Shore Acres subdivision, there's no, we could not find any evidence of any buried lots of record in that lot. So the Hamm lot, even with the Nichols addition, is less than four acres in size. Because this is an 80,000 square foot zone, you can't divide it and make it an undersized lot. So as long as it's under 160,000 square feet, it can't be divided. And it is under 160,000 square feet.
Okay.
And no grandfathered lot there.
Thanks. Okay, that's the point I was trying to clarify, so, thank you. Lane?
I guess, the note you're referring to, I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same note, is note number nine on the plan? Is that what you're concerned about?
No, not actually.
I'm not exactly sure what is.
No, but it's been clarified, so I don't have any more questions, but.
But there are no acreages on this plan?
No.
Where is it, where, you were talking about acreage calculations, I, okay. That's simply the applicant's submission, right?
Right, it's part of materials submit.
But, okay, it seems, but that is picked up again on the actual plan that we are being asked to approve.
Sheet two?
On sheet two, I think it is, right, on note nine. I'm actually less concerned about what the applicant asserts in this than the language as it appears on sheet two, which says no more than four lots can be served by the proposed private road without returning to the planning board. Because it seems to me, I'm not sure what the word "served" means, but if we're talking about use rights, that's really nothing for us to opine on one way or another. The word "served" to me seems to mean legal right of access, and we have no place saying anything about how many lots have a legal right of access. But what we can say is that there is a maximum number of residents that can use this road for their primary access without returning to the planning board, and I don't think that number is four. I don't, and I guess this is where I would have questions for the fire chief. I don't think we should be saying that this road, unless we're going to go to the 22-feet width, I don't think we can say that four lots can use this road as their access without coming back. They may have a legal right to the road, but that's a different question than whether the road can be developed as a 14-foot wide road and four residences can be served by it. So I would clarify, I would rewrite this note entirely after we hear from the fire chief, in terms of how many residences can use this road as a primary means of access as a matter of safety. And the other question I have is whether there is a sprinkler in the Hamm's house, because if not, we already have more than one residence that would be served by this road, and they wouldn't both have sprinklers unless, and we have no authority to require that the Hamm's get sprinklers.
Correct.
So I guess now I would want to hear from the fire chief in terms of how many properties can safely be served off of a 14-foot wide roadway. There are two feet of gravel on either side, but as the town engineer observed, the gravel part, the grass part is not plowed. So for all intents and purposes, it is a 14-foot wide way that would be there for the fire truck. So I would want to know what the safety situation is, because we've heard a variety of things here.
When John and I've had a conversation, obviously, about this road, and one of the things that I said in my notes to Maureen, I believe you have them, is one lot, the first of all, the 14-foot road, I don't, I'm not a fan of, but there are, it's not mine to address on the shielding from the Hamm's house and all that sort of stuff. Obviously, I like the wider road if I can have it. But what I said is if, that one lot, I could live with one house being served by the 14-foot road if it had sprinklers. If we go to more, then I'd want to be able to have that road widened to 22 feet. Because of the distance, the closest hydrant is by Overlook Lane. If we have to go more than 1,000 feet, we need to get two trucks in there. If the first truck is laid down, hosed, on a 14-foot ride road, there's not enough room for the second truck to get by it. And sprinklers are designed to contain a fire, not necessarily put it out, so that, what I'm looking for in a sprinkler is to buy us some time to get that operation set up. And you're right, a 14-foot wide road is a difficult road, is a challenging road for us. And that's 14 feet at best, if there's snow, is someone going to keep it to the 14 feet? The 22 feet gives me room to pass trucks, 14 feet does not. So that's why, you know, I'm trying to be as understanding as I can to the other needs in this whole question, but I have a rather narrow focus. I want to give myself the best odds of a successful outcome, and that's why I prefer the wider roads.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
Can you put your microphone down?
Yeah. So in terms of what Elaine was starting to get at, we do have this existing house that is not sprinkled. How would you handle that? I mean?
That's readily accessible from?
That one's accessible, so you wouldn't?
You're not 100 feet off the road with that. I mean, that's not the same issue if we get 800 or 1,000 feet off, up that road. It's right, it's close proximity to the existing road.
So essentially, though, what you're saying is if any house besides the one on that back lot gets built that's served by that road, you would want to see a wider road?
I'd want to see a wider road.
Sprinkled or not?
Period, to be honest with you. My preference is for the wider road. But having said that, that there are other factors in play here, that if we, if you do decide to go to an narrow road, then the sprinklers will give me time to get our operation in and make changes based on what conditions we find when we get there.
But it seems that what they're proposing is potentially three sprinkled houses at the end of this road, is that?
And I did say in my note to Maureen that if we go to more than one house, I'd want to be able to go to the 22-foot wide road.
Liza? Do you have any opinion about paving the 14-foot, you know, the proposed 14 feet plus the two feet on each side, so gaining another four feet?
Yeah, I believe Elaine mentioned it earlier. If you have gravel edges with grass, they're not going to get plowed. Nobody wants to plow that, so now I'm down to a 14-foot road. I mean, the wider the road, the better off I am, but, you know, we have 10-foot wide trucks, so whether the road's 14 feet or 18 feet, I still can't pass them. So.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Maureen started out by saying that the town staff is very reluctant to approve waivers to road width, and it seems to me that we're approving a waiver to the road width to save three trees that provide access, that provide some shielding for the Hamm's. And to me, that's not sufficient reason to waive a town standard.
Well, I don't know if that's the only reason. I mean, part of it is also, you know, every time you make a wide street, you get the sense that your neighborhood has a lot of paving in it.
Then we should amend the ordinance to say that we don't require 20-foot.
Right, but.
To me, we're sort of amending our ordinance lot by lot, and I think that's inappropriate. I think we have to have a significant reason that's unique to this property, and it seems to me that the Hamm's have plenty room on their lot to plant new oak trees if they really need screening, and they're going to have a fence. If we think our road ordinance is wrong, that we should not require 22-foot roads, then the way to fix that is by proposing amendment to the ordinance. Nobody's done that, we haven't been asked to do that, we haven't discussed it, and I think to sort of essentially do that lot by lot is not appropriate. I may not, I may be in the minority here, but.
Henry?
I just have a quick question. Where is the nearest water main to this?
A hydrant, I believe, is Overlook is the closest one.
So how far is that from this road, from this proposed road?
It's not very far. There is, yeah. I'm sorry, there's 385 hydrants, I can't remember where they all are, but I know that there's a couple on, in the area, but.
So that's not a major problem, then?
Yosa?
The further we get from that hydrant becomes the bigger problem.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah.
We can only go, we can only go 1,000 feet before we need another truck in.
So if you went to the end of this road from a hydrant, is that in excess of 1,000 feet?
I couldn't answer that without.
Well, if you go to the turnaround, and then you've got to lay, you've got to lay.
225 feet, I would think we were within the 1,000 feet.
Within the 1,000? Yeah.
Liza? I'm sympathetic to Joe's argument of minimizing the pavement, but yours, safety, and it sounds like running, running a lot of hose up this private road, this proposed accessway, is the issue for having two trucks.
Yeah, depending on how far the house is.
So I'm wondering if another hydrant was placed at the end of Old Hayfield Road?
I'd have to go see what size main that is, that goes down Reef Road, because if you're going for, if it's an eight-inch main, it's an eight-inch, you know, that's marginal. It's not as big as we would like them, we prefer the 10s, but, so, I mean, you'd end up with an eight-inch, it would be better than what we have now, which is no hydrant up there, so. But I, you know.
And we don't know? Do we know, John, how big the main is?
Eight inch.
It is eight inches, okay. So that's not an option?
It could be. I mean, there's a lot of options, and I'm sensitive to the needs of everyone, but again, you know, I just want to answer to the narrow focus that I have. I want to give myself the best opportunity, and I don't want to, you know, the other questions are not mine to answer, I don't believe.
If this was a private accessway, if we weren't looking at a road, if we were looking at private accessway, it would be the same, the travel width would be 14 paved, and there would be two shoulders, two feet wide, which is what is actually proposed. If this was an accessway, a driveway in a sense, would you also then request, because we're not, the applicant wouldn't be asking for a waiver, let's say we were building a long driveway, would you also have the same concerns that that house be sprinkled?
Yes, and the turnarounds, I mean, whether it's a private driveway or a road, I had the same concerns.
Okay, and so if there's another house, you know what the Pryor's lot is? Are you familiar with this, the diagram? If the Pryors ever were able to, wanted to, build a house, and they would probably, you'd feel more comfortable, let's say the Boggs weren't building their private accessway, let's say the Pryors are in front of us, would you want them to be sprinkled, have sprinklers? Would you feel more comfortable getting in there, fighting?
If they were asking for the same narrow road width, yes.
So it's more the distance of having to bring the hose, it's not so much you're worried about traffic on this road, or somebody parking a car on this road that would make it even the travel lane last year?
Certainly, that's always going to be a concern, but the whole idea behind sprinklers is to gain us time, and sprinklers will, for the most part, if it's a small fire, they will contain it. Sometimes they will put it out, but the whole premise is that they will give us time to get.
I'm almost looking at this as, we are, in a sense, building a private accessway to get to the Boggs lot. And you're saying that you would even then want sprinklers, I believe I just heard. So we're actually now saying, we're going to build it a long driveway, we're going to call it a private road, and perhaps if the Boggs wanted to put two homes, the Pryors wanted to put one or two, you know, we're using a long driveway to access these additional lots. But as far as fire safety would go, I believe I'm still hearing, it's not so much getting to these lots, you would still have the problem if we made it a private accessway to the Pryors, we made it a private accessway to the Boggs, and there was just one house. The problem is the length of the hose going up, the time necessary to maybe get two vehicles to a home instead of, you know, you can probably get that one up there, but if you needed to get a second. So I'm just wondering, if we do build it to this standard of a private accessway, in a sense, a long driveway, but we allow other homes to potentially, perhaps, be built, that having sprinklers in all of these perhaps potential homes would help alleviate some of the concerns you have about if this driveway is not long enough to me, for me to get back to the Boggs' lot, at least we got the sprinklers, and then we'll try.
Well, the whole sprinkler thing came out of the discussion of it going to be, being a 14-foot wide road, and so knowing that that can restrict our operations, I'm looking for the sprinklers to buy me the time to get ourselves set up. Again, my preference is for the wider road, but I understand you have other concerns to address, and I just want to keep everybody, that I have a narrow focus on the width of the road. I like a wide road, for all sorts of reasons. But, you know, sprinklers, again, anytime we can have sprinklers, it works to our advantage, it works to the homeowner's advantage, but the initial reason for the sprinklers was it was a 14, they were proposing a 14-foot wide road, and so then I want to make sure that I have, again, it works in my favor.
But just to reiterate, you're okay with a 14-foot wide road accessing a single sprinkled house, but you don't like a 14-foot wide road accessing any more than one sprinkled house? That's when, one is the threshold, after that you want?
Because the more houses, the more opportunity for traffic, you talk about parked cars, you talk about other things going on.
So my question, is it possible to have some provision that if more than one house was built that used this roadway, that that would kick in a, the requirement that the road be widened to 22 feet, let it be built at 14 initially?
That's something for the board to consider. Maureen, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, you can do that. Our success with that hasn't been so great, but yeah, you certainly can put that in as a note.
Pardon me, Chief, I may have misunderstood what you said before.
One house on the Boggs parcel sprinkled?
Well, I want to give.
Am I crazy about you?
No, when originally, you know, obviously, my preference is for the widest road, for the 22-foot wide road. In the interest of all the other factors that were going in there, the option is out there to do this other thing, but if I could have what, the 22-foot wide road, that would be the best option for me. But again, I have a narrow focus on that, I just want to be clear on that.
One house, two houses, three houses, four houses?
Any, one house on a 14-foot wide drive, I consider that a driveway is a challenge for us, and we have a lot of those challenges out already in this town, so I'm.
So the additional houses just compound your?
Well, there's more, there's more opportunity for traffic and things. Well, there's more, there's more opportunity for traffic and things.
Is this controversy existing over four trees? Is that what has us wondering about?
Yes.
Yes.
I would think, I would expand on that a little bit and say, Joe brought some points up. I know in the past, we have done this. We have, Old Sea Point, point was 12 paved and two three-foot wide, and there were four houses on that, and when the applicant came before us, they submitted, they also submitted some paperwork, and I was reading about the road width, because they asked for a waiver, which we ended up granting, and it said, "The plans propose a private gravel road with a width of 18 feet with two-foot grass shoulders on either side, a reduction from 22-foot width. The existing gravel road will range from 11 to 15 feet, and it serves three residents, and the reduction is a request to minimize environmental disturbances, avoid a greenbelt easement, to maintain the low volume of vehicle presence and the scenic character of the neighborhood." So possibly those last, that last sentence might be also what we are trying to do, other than just preserve, when we say just preserve are three or four trees. I think that's the...
Those were existing houses, though, were they not?
No, this was...
Some, several of them were.
Actually, I read to you Golden Ridge. Sorry, I read to you Golden Ridge, and I thought...
It was mostly existing houses to...
No, on Golden Ridge.
Three new lots to that.
So I read you Golden Ridge. My, I was looking at also Old Sea Point, which we did. Old Sea Point was 12 paved, paved, and Golden Ridge was 18 gravel. Just to give an idea of what we've done in the past, but I understand those were waivers, and I understand what you're saying, Elaine.
The more we do it, the more it seems to me that we're, we're amending a statute in a way that we shouldn't, and we should not be, we should not just routinely be doing it, and it's, you know, it's all, I can't imagine a neighborhood that would not rather have narrower rather than wider roads because they think it looks aesthetically preferable.
Until there's a fire.
That's always going to be, until there's a fire, that's always going to be the preference, and whoever has to pave the cost for building the road is always going to want to build a narrower road. I think those, those factors are not ever unique. That's the universal. If those are the factors we want to address, we need to address those by amending the statute. To me, we do waivers in something that's unique to this property, and we may not have always done that, but we, I think we should, and I just don't see the overwhelming need here, and what we're, what we're talking about is a new development, a new road, potentially in the back there, and, you know, we allow one house, and then the next person's going to come to the planning board and say, "I want to build a second house," and they're going to moan and groan and say, "Gee, just to build one more house, you're going to make me redo this whole road and repave it just for one more house?" And we're going to say, "Oh gee, that's so, that's way too expensive for you poor homeowner, and we won't approve it." And then sort of piecemeal one at a time, it's very difficult, and I think we need to start out, this is a new road that's being created, we're calling it a road, not a private accessway, and I think we should, we should respect our town statutes and require that they be complied with.
There's one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I had a question for the chief, and as I recall, there was a fire at the end of Old Sea Point Road.
Yes.
And it was, can you tell us about that fire, and was the, were there problems accessing the house?
It's challenging, because it's a narrow road, and that's, again, why we speak to, you know, we were fortunate with summertime and not winter, when we could get off the road and get around, but we ended up with everything stacked up in a, it, it's not enough room for what we had to do, but we managed to do it. But there's challenges all through town. It's not unique to that road.
Okay, gotcha. I remember it was pretty damaging, so I, had the road been wider, would you have been able to put the fire out faster?
Those are hypotheticals.
Gotcha, but I get that it was in the summer, and that in the winter it'd be really...
Yeah, the winter obviously now is our option, if there's snow.
Henry?
Yes, looking at this map, if you put, assuming you put the road where it proposed at the end, and somehow or other, the rest of this lot gets developed, you could possibly end up with a dwelling quite some considerable way away, accessed by a 14-foot road, and then you've got to somehow or other make your way down this other area here. You can have either a lot of trucks in the way getting to, I mean, it just doesn't seem feasible, unless you don't build at the end of that, and in which case, why is there three or four possible lots coming out?
Yeah, if there's any more than one lot on the four-and-a-half acre parcel, the applicant, whoever it is, is going to have to come back before the planning board, because it's not enough frontage for two lots. There's only enough frontage on the Boggs property for a single lot.
When you say frontage, frontage to what?
Road frontage.
You're saying the road frontage is purely from, from this new road that you're going to build? That's the frontage, that represents the frontage?
This, this turnaround represents the required frontage for a single lot on the Boggs property.
Right.
If they, or if anyone wanted to build an additional lot on the Boggs property, this road would have to be extended in order to create that frontage.
Yes, still, Elizabeth Road or whatever, what are you, it's still 14 feet. You'd have to extend...
No, no, they'd have to come back to the planning board, and they'd be required to build it 22 feet wide.
I recall last time, there was no actual requirement to actually build it. It was just going to be a possible thing to ensure that this is a buildable lot in the future.
Correct. That's, that's the only thing that...
There was no plans to actually implement this trade...
That's correct.
So to clarify, you wouldn't be taking the trees out right away?
Not until the road is constructed. I just want to say, you know, I hope there's a compromise here somewhere, because, I mean, these aren't just three or four trees. These are mature old trees. They're significant, and, you know, I, I like what Joe, Joe's proposal is. If there is any more than one home, one additional home built on the Boggs property, this includes the Pryor lot, that they would be required to come back to the planning board, or you can put a condition on the plan that the road would be required to be widened to 22 feet wide.
Yes, Maureen.
Has, would the applicant be willing to not put the loman seed over the two-foot wide gravel?
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that.
Because if that were the case, then we can make sure the maintenance agreement requires you to plow the full 18 feet of gravel as opposed to 14 feet.
Exactly. If the chief is comfortable with this, what we would propose is rather than two-foot wide grass shoulders, we would make two-foot wide gravel shoulders, so there'd be 14 feet wide of pavement plus the two feet of gravel shoulders rather than grass.
And is that, it's still a waiver?
Well, yeah, it is a waiver, but there has to be some strong language in there that makes sure that it's plowed to that width, because again, I'm not sure that, you know, if it's gravel, can it be plowed adequately? Again, I'm looking to give myself as many advantages as I can. I'm not trying to make it hard for, the reason we talked about the sprinklers and the narrow road was, you know, to try to accommodate that, but if we start talking multiple dwellings down there, I'm just not a fan of that narrow road.
Can you say you need 20 feet, 20 feet plus to get to...
I need, I need about 20 feet.
So...
But 18 feet, if, you know, the tires will still be on the pavement, it's the mirrors and stuff that you need to get by the truck, by each truck.
But 18, 14 plus, four, if you're 18, is that what, excuse me, stop?
Yeah, again, I, you know, I want to stick with the premise that I'm a big fan of the 22-foot road. If we can, and it's up to you if you want to strike a compromise, you know, I just, the 18 foot is better than 14 feet, and obviously, 22 is better than 18, so...
But if your truck's 10 feet wide, and you've got two trucks, you need 20 feet regardless of what's under them?
It's 10, it's 10 feet at the mirrors, so, tires are inside the mirrors, so...
You need 20 feet to move one truck past another, unless you collapse the mirror.
Liza, I have a question for the app. Have the Pryors been very involved in this? Because it seems like by moving the center line of the road five foot off-center, you know, not only are you saving these oak trees, but now the road, I think it's five feet closer to the Pryor's house, and, and they also have an interest because of these lots they may want to develop in the future. I'm just curious, I don't know, have you, you heard back from them?
Yes, Stefan Metta, 5 Overlook Lane. Yes, so I've spoken with Mr. Pryor, George Pryor, who speaks on behalf of his wife, who I think is the trustee of, of the, of the trust that owns the, those lots, and he's fully aware. So it might be helpful just to remind the board that the motivation for us has always been to preserve buildability of our back lot, and this is therefore theoretical for us ever to, to build the, the road. We are being deferential to the Pryors primarily in making this a proposal, request for a roadway rather than an access, because they have those grandfathered lots, and they know that we have changed our plans from an accessway to a roadway to accommodate the potential rights for developing those two grandfathered lots. Yes, so they are fully aware.
But you said you changed your proposal to a roadway, but you're proposing to build a roadway to the accessway standards, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And, and that is really to respect the hams property.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So I don't know if you had the chance to do a site visit, but it's very tight in there, and a larger paved way would have a significant impact on the hams.
Yeah, but my thought is, to your point, is that if you're proposing a roadway out of respect for the Pryors, but we've got this issue with accessway, only one house can be built, it's, it's not doing the Pryors any favors in a practical sense, because they would still have to come before the planning board and widen the road.
Yes, but we're not here to argue on the hams behalf, or the Pryors behalf, really, just to give them the possibility if they want to develop it.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any further comments? Elaine?
Is it correct, Maureen, that they, that this could not come in as a private accessway since the road already serves the hams property?
No, it's, it's not correct, because you could, you could convert to a private accessway as soon as it passes the hams driveway.
So it seems to me that perhaps that's what we ought to do, because then what we're building is a private accessway. So it's, what we're, what we're being asked to approve is a private accessway. So if we call it a private accessway, then it seems to me we solve our problem, and we're, and we're respecting the private accessway standards, and anyone who wanted to come in and build another lot, it's very clear that they would need a different approval because they would have to convert that private accessway to a roadway.
Right, and, you know, everything you said is absolutely true, and to be fair, I recommended to the applicant that they come in with a road instead of a private accessway, because I was looking to the future, I was looking to the full potential for this accessway to be used, and I came up with no more than two lots on the Bog lot and one lot behind the Pryors. In fact, it's two lots on the Pryors. So for that reason, I recommended that they go with a private road. The other reason I recommended that is based on the past history of the planning board. You have multiple times waived the road standards, and it was my expectation that you would continue on that path. Certainly, if you have decided to break out in a new direction, the applicants may want to consider coming forward and at this moment, changing their application to a private accessway standard application. With that said, what you've done in the past is, once the road's there, then you've been willing to grant waivers. So I think as a board, they need some direction.
I'd like to respond to that. If, if our town staff is telling citizens that we routinely waive our statutory requirements, I find that very troubling, because waivers are not supposed to be routine.
But to be fair, and to respond...
And that may be what we've done, but that's what we routinely, if that is what routinely happens...
Arlington Lane, Becky's Lane, Old Sea Point Road.
We should amend the statute.
It was amended. It was amended to make the road width wider, and, yes, and I've watched this whole thing unfold, it's been painful. You had a 20-foot wide road standard, and it was a standard you applied to local roads, both public and private, and when waivers were requested, you denied them. And then when the standard went up to a 22-foot wide local road, the very first time you were asked for a waiver, you waived it down to 18 feet for Arlington Lane, and then there was a waiver for Becky's Lane, and there was a waiver for Old Sea Point Road, and there was a waiver for Golden Ridge Lane. So when applicants ask me what direction they take, I look at the past practice of the board in directing them.
And one other thing, I don't have the, the language in, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I believe there's some language in the waiver section that talks about waivers are warranted when it has to do with preservation of environmental or vegetation or natural features.
Yes, Liza? I'd have to believe it is, but speaking of that, so just from using my pen as a measurement stick, it looks like these trees are closer than 14 feet together, the centers of these oak trees, and they look to me like they were really close together from the photo, and, and I'm not an arborist, but it seems to me that they're too close together for huge trees, so I'm not sure, seems to me like they need to be thin, that middle one needs to come out, if they're really going to thrive.
Absolutely not.
But they look kind of scraggly to me from the photo, I have to say, and I could totally appreciate that in the summer, that ceiling would be great, but...
They're magnificent oak trees.
From the photo, yeah. We should have had, I wish we'd had a sidewalk.
They're magnificent oak trees, and they're not scraggly, they're, they're not too close together, they've grown like this ever since they were planted or naturally grown. They're magnificent oak trees, and I would hate to come up with a plan that required...
I just know from planting trees in my own yard that 14 feet's pretty close together for, you know, a big tree species. So, but we, that really, I think we should have had a sidewalk, because it's hard for me to evaluate the value of those trees without having seen them, but you, you don't think they're too close together?
No, I don't.
Maureen, were you able to find that language?
Yes, it's the end of the subdivision ordinance, section 16-3-5 waivers. Where the planning board finds that undue hardship, practical difficulties, or restriction upon imaginative and otherwise desirable design may result in strict compliance with this ordinance, it may waive one or more of the requirements of this ordinance in favor of a proposed alternative upon showing that, as compared with strict compliance, such alternative, one, will not create more hazardous traffic conditions or less sanitary sewage disposal conditions than strict compliance, two, will provide more varied and imaginative subdivision layout and design, three, will serve substantially the standards of road design and construction required by this chapter and the zoning ordinance, and four, will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and objectives of the comprehensive plan or this ordinance, provided that in granting such waiver, the planning board may impose such conditions as they deem necessary to secure the foregoing objectives.
Nothing about fire in the house?
No, it's, I think it does. It says will not create more hazardous traffic conditions or less sanitary disposal conditions than strict compliance. It has varied and imaginative subdivision design, substantially the standards of road design and construction required. I think that if you felt that, that a waiver would hamper fire protection, you could deny the waiver.
Yes.
I thought Elaine had an ingenious proposal, although I have a little trouble, it sounds a little bit incongruous, taking a paper street, which is essentially a public way, at least with respect to the parcels and the subdivision, and creating on it what you would call a private driveway. But at the same time, if we take your proposal and have a, a street, if you will, but limited for the purposes of the waiver to serving only one residence sprinkled at the end, would that, Joe, that, is that basically what you were saying?
Yeah, well, the, how this street would be the 14-foot width.
14... 14, 22, only so long as there's only one parcel, one dwelling on the bogs parcel and its sprinkler.
Right.
So if the Pryors want to add properties, too bad. If the HAMs want to put property, build on the back of their property, too bad.
But if the Pryors want property, all they have to do is just allow a little bulge around the trees and leave safe trees and still have your width of the road. I mean, it does encroach on their property a bit, but...
They'd have to do a compliant road.
My suggestion was to put in a provision...
Hold on, guys, Joe's speaker.
Oh, yeah, well, they don't have to cut that out, yeah.
Hold on, guys, Joe, Joe has the floor, guys.
Yeah, who does that burden fall if you do that?
Okay, I missed some of the conversation, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, I just clarified that my proposal was that there's a provision that the street be widened if additional houses are built. And Pete asked, who would that burden fall upon? And I didn't get that far.
I suppose if anybody had proposed to add more dwellings, but that's the only way that you could possibly deliver what they're asking for and reasonably keep Chief Gleason happy, right?
I have one other question.
Henry?
Assuming that you would build, assuming you would build something on this lot, you've still got things like electricity and sewerage to bring up. Would you bring that under the existing road? Would that be how you would do it? Yeah, I mean, once the road was built and you wanted to build something over here, you've still got sewerage and electricity and water to bring up there. So you would build that under the road, take the road up and...
Those are all designed on the plans. We'd bring water, electric, telephone and cable. Sanitary sewer would be onsite disposal.
And that wouldn't destroy the trees doing that?
No.
You'd be able to build it on the other side of the road, I assume? Thank you.
So if you were to take my suggestion, you would have to take a wider road into account when laying out your utilities?
For future.
For future, right.
Okay. I'm trying to now find out what all our options are so that then we can just try to narrow it down, maybe get to one option. I'm just going to throw this out, not that anyone's for or against, but one option is the applicant now proposes this be a private accessway, and it serves one lot back on the Boggs's property. It would not, though, if it is a private accessway, it would be 14 feet wide paved. Is that correct, Maureen, as I...
Well, I think the applicant has some flexibility. I mean, right, you could, without, with very little change to the applicant's proposal, have 14-foot wide paved, two-foot wide gravel shoulders, just strip off the loam and seat. You could also say paving, yeah, if you're paving more than 14, you've got to have enough gravel shoulder to stabilize the pavement.
Okay.
That's why if you're going to pave more than 14, you'd need at least, I would think, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to channel the public works director.
So can I just ask a basic question about that? If you, you can build a private accessway on a paper street?
We have approved that several times because if you, I mean, under the shifting paper street law, there are rights, not just that the town has in theory, but also rights that individual property owners have. So if multiple people have access to the same area of paper street, one person could go in and cut down all the trees to make it more accessible. Someone else could go in and put in gravel. Someone else could go in and actually pave it. What you can't do is do things that abridge the other people's rights. And if their rights are rights of access and all you're doing is paving it, you're not abridging their rights and you're actually enhancing their access rights. So Cotton Road, which is a road that's in this exact same neighborhood, the planning board had previously granted a private accessway permit to build in a paper street where it was clear that there were future, there were additional lots up the road from where the private accessway was approved. And the concept was that as those additional lots were built upon, they would be able to use the road that had already been built as a private accessway.
So that first option, private accessway...
14-foot paved, two-foot wide gravel shoulders.
It still would not be 20, though. That only comes up to 18. So that still doesn't, so the con would be, it still does not reach what you're looking for. The pro would be, we are not really giving any waivers. It still saves the trees, I believe, so it gives the buffering the HAMs are looking for. Another con would be the Pryors, if they ever decided to build, they, this is a private accessway, they would have to come back.
Correct.
So those are the pros and cons on...
You would still require the sprinkler at the house?
Okay, yes, we would still require a sprinkler per the Fire Chief's recommendation.
There were two other waivers that we requested that we'd like to continue to request, and that is the five-foot offset, which will help provide separation between the road and the trees. And there was, do you remember the grade waiver that we were requesting at the beginning?
Yes.
We still want to continue those requests.
I've captured that as option one. Option two then would be, we build this to a private road standard. Then the travelway would be a 22-foot. Pro would be that that would satisfy the Fire Chief. Con would be, all these, it would be that the HAMs, we would lose the oak trees for the HAMs. It would be 22 feet of paved area in what is otherwise right now, looks like that. So very overgrown. And then the Pryors, the pro for the Pryors is they could potentially, possibly someday, just have a, you know, driveway cut right into that road. So that's another one. I'm looking for a third option. Does anyone have a third option on this? I was trying to write these down, but I'm missing some of it. Anyone have a suggestion or we're going to have to...
Well, the third option would be the compromise that, as outlined by Joe.
And that would be, let me just...
I think that's number one.
Was it number one?
No.
No. Number one was the private accessway, period.
Yeah.
With the house sprinkled and Joe's was...
Putting a provision that it would be a private roadway, and it would be widened to the 22 feet if any additional houses, if more than one house were to be served by the road.
That's pretty well given, isn't it? There's not enough accessway at the end of the T junction and not enough...
Not just on that lot, but the Pryor slot.
If it was a private road, what would the standard be that it's being built to, what the applicant is proposing right now? We're going to call it, so it would be what they're proposing. It would be 14-foot wide with gravel.
Right, in other words, the waiver would be granted as long as it's only serving one house.
Isn't it, in a sense, a private accessway? Because that only serves one.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
I would prefer having it a private accessway, just, you know, all things being equal because I think it's important for further development for that precedent not to be there, that the, an earlier planning board granted a waiver to a private road width standard.
Okay.
And I think there might be then, you know, more inertia to overcome.
Okay, so...
A private accessway.
Is a private accessway limited to one house or can you have two houses off a private accessway?
No, once you go to two, it has to be a private road.
Right, okay, fine, then that needs to...
So it would have to be a private road to, up to the beginning of the Pryors driveway. So that first part would be compliant with private road standards, and then it would narrow as it went on back, but it would be narrowing before it got to the trees.
Actually...
22 feet at that point.
I take it back. There is a slight difference in my proposal because if we have him lay this out so that it could be turned into a private road, it is slightly different than if the layout is exactly as it is now. In other words, the utilities would have to be taken into account. I mean, you wouldn't need a full-blown design for the future 22-foot road, but the design would have to take that into account.
We have to have the private road standard apply up to the HAMs driveway and then convert from there. So this is a really a two-part application for X number of feet as a private road and then Y number of feet as a private road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And how would the engineering, I don't follow all the engineering about if it's built to a private accessway standards, which this appears to be, but please clarify that for me. Is this built to a private road and the width is just private accessway standards? I didn't follow what you were saying.
Oh, well, I'm just, is this design capable of being widened or is the, are the utilities too, were the utilities running in relation to the road? And you have grading there.
So he goes from 56 to 58. Well, these are just the grading. This is 58, 57 sort of shape, right?
So on sheet three, John?
Yeah.
Where you're showing the utilities hard to the left of that road?
Right.
Your only choice, well, you have your water under the road.
Yeah, they wouldn't, I just looked at it. We have the water on the right-hand side, the underground electric on the left-hand side. There is no public sewer here, so it's all onsite disposal. There would not be an issue in, at some point, widening this road to private road standards. It wouldn't have an impact on the utilities. You know, Stefan just mentioned one thing that I think we need to discuss here is that if we decide to go with a private accessway rather than a private road, we want to make sure that this private accessway is for the Boggs's property because we don't want to lose our right to potentially build a home back there.
That's the way a private accessway would be structured. It's lot-specific.
Okay, it's lot-specific.
Yes.
Liza? Yeah, I guess one thing that I think is important for planning purposes is if this becomes a private road and it indeed is 22 feet wide, say two homes are built, I think that, given that those oak trees would then come out anyway, that this road be centered in the right of way.
Be what, sorry?
This road be centered in the right of way. I think that's fair to homeowners on both sides. And I don't know if that's something that we can direct for future development, but if it does go from, you know, 18 to 22, the growth should be, you know, on the right as we look at this.
But would that be a matter, would that be a matter for the future planning board if this was ever brought up or...
You could put it in a note. You could, I mean, if you're, it seems like you're moving in the direction of a private accessway with a note that if it's going to be, provide access to more, you have to come back to the planning board, you have to build a private road, it has to be 22 feet wide, and the road you're building has to be centered in the right of way. You could add that to the note.
I don't see why it has to be centered like that, though, to be honest with it.
Okay.
That's just right.
Yeah.
It's going to be built that way, and everybody's acceptable who owns property around it to increase the size for that for whatever reason.
Liza was saying if the road became wide, that it would be centered.
You think it should be centered?
If it became wider. Yeah, just Liza's argument, I thought was good, that each side shares.
But I want to continue. Are we looking at a option of making a private accessway with some of the other conditions? Or do we want to still look at allowing something else to be there? Are we moving towards the accessway or are we not? Caroline, we haven't heard from you. Do you want to...
Everybody keeps asking my questions, so I just sit here and... I was raising my hand and then Peter asked my question, so I was all set.
Do you feel one way or the other to jump in on this?
I am inclined, if this were, is going to be a private road, to build it to standard. That would be my inclination. So in order to give them private accessway, call a spade a spade. If it's a private accessway, call it a private accessway.
Elaine, have we captured?
I would agree.
About the waivers? Henry?
I guess I'll go along with that, yeah.
Okay. Joe, what are your thoughts about which direction we want to take?
Private accessway, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then, at this point, we will be looking at a private accessway, and we would be looking at, my notes now, with the, on either side, two feet of gravel shoulder.
Right.
Okay. Now, it's a private accessway. Thoughts on the sprinkler? I don't know if that is normally in our plans, but we've heard from the Fire Chief that he would like it. Any thoughts on the sprinkler?
Yes?
Yes, Caroline?
If this goes to a private accessway, we are not granting a waiver. And as a result of not granting a waiver, do we have the authority to request sprinkler? I was just checking the traveled way because the 14 and the 18 gets used interchangeably. And under the private accessway standards, it says the traveled way shall be constructed with a minimum of three inches of crushed gravel, having a width of at least 14 feet. The remaining width of the gravel base may be loomed and seeded. So the standard for a private accessway is 14 feet of traveled way, which can be paved or gravel, and then two feet gravel shoulder on either side, which can be loomed and seeded. So what we were saying bef, you could, however, you are still shifting it five feet off the center line, so I guess you could use that as your hook.
Are we required to approve a private accessway? Isn't that something that requires, are there other standards that take into account length of the road and further safety?
Not length of the road. The lot approved under this provision shall be approved with only one dwelling. It has to have a right-of-way width, a minimum width of 30 feet. There has to be subbase gravel of 15 inches, and it's a type D gravel with a width of 18 feet, and then another three inches of gravel within 10 feet of the edge of the paving, of the edge of the accessway from the town road. It has to be paved for the first 50 feet. There has to be gutter drainage. There has to be a turnaround. There has to be adequate site distance. And it also says, under the private accessway standards, that the planning board may reduce the requirements of subsections B1, 2, and 3, which includes all the standards for width, to a lesser standard where there is an existing private access or to promote better neighborhood development. But in no case shall standards be reduced so that access for any emergency vehicle is prohibited.
Okay, so I don't believe we're looking to reduce this private accessway. So the question once again will be then, sprinklers. It's not a requirement. Would, how's the board feel, given the testimony from the Fire Chief about requiring sprinklers?
I like to give the Fire Chief everything he asks for.
That's a yes to sprinklers? Elaine agrees, Henry? One more and...
Fine.
Caroline, then, are you on board for that?
Sure.
Okay, then that makes four for the sprinklers. So...
Is sprinklers only authority of moving the center line of the...
No, I don't believe I was...
That's the only hook you've got?
Yeah, we have to have a hook to require sprinkler.
Are we no longer in the sub, what?
No, the private accessway standards come out of the zoning ordinance. So you've left...
Can we do this or does the applicant have to come back with a new application?
I'm guessing the applicant would be much more comfortable with a conditional approval that requires him to make these changes to the plan. that requires him to make these changes to the plans. So yes, you can approve it tonight conditionally to plans being changed as you dictate.
Even though this isn't what the application, it's been filed as a?
No, it hasn't been.
Zoning ordinance and now it's filed under, we're granting something under the zoning ordinance?
Yep.
There hasn't been any public notice that this was a possibility of what would happen?
It is a lesser approval than what was noticed.
So that's okay?
I think it is. Now, if the applicant wanted to say, I don't want a private accessway, I want a private road approval, then you may want to ask the applicant to come back and make changes.
And actually, Elaine, if it makes you feel better, when I was going over the agenda, I noticed that it originally said under section 19-7-9B, private road, public hearing. I believe this is section 19-?
Yes, and, and that's a good point, because.
It's on the agenda.
Your requirement for road access comes under the zoning ordinance, but if you're, and if you're doing a private accessway, it's 19-7, 19-?
Seven.
Seven-9B, and if you are, have access to more than one lot, the same exact section then kicks you into the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
So we're, we're in both places.
And the public so then has been given notice.
Okay.
So we have covered that. Again, on the sprinklers?
Can we require the sprinkler based on unusual topography or length of the accessway? No?
I, there's nothing in here that says you can. If, if you ask for it and the applicant doesn't fight you on it, then yes, you can do it.
The applicant has something to say.
Well, the applicant is standing by the podium. Would you like to address any questions or make any comments on what you've heard?
Yes, thank you. My, my only concern about this whole discussion in the potential changing of the roadway to an accessway application was partially answered by the question about public notification. So that was answered, although the priors who live out of state, are elderly, don't really keep up with, with things, I would feel a little bit concerned about appropriate notification to them, which really leads me to the corollary question. If we proceeded with an application for a private accessway and in the future the priors wanted to develop those two grandfather lots, would there be a means for them to approach this council for a change to a private roadway up to their lots?
Yes.
They'd get to go through this process.
Okay, great, thank you.
And it sounds like they'd have to go through the process anyway, if we've granted a waiver.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Would you like to continue or would you like to table this? If you want the priors to, I mean, I'm, whatever you'd like to do. It's, it's been one of those evenings, so if you do, you want to continue on looking at this as a private accessway or?
Yes, I think so. The priors understand the difference between each of the discussion.
Okay.
They understand that.
Can I bring you back to the podium? I'm sorry.
The priors understand the difference between an accessway, private accessway and a private roadway.
Okay.
I'm, again, trying to keep their interests at, at heart here and make sure that there's no decision made contrary to their interests. So if, if the best approach would be to table this until we have an opportunity to speak with them, then we ought to probably go that route.
So are you asking at this point to table or?
It's your desire. It's your, it's your land.
I think it says in the initial agreement that it impacts the priors and they did grant us the right to move the road at the center of the road, meaning that it was going to be a road that they could use at some point. I think we'll be there to clarify that.
All right, so then we would request to table the, the application.
Okay. Then, would anyone like to make a motion at this point?
Should we do a site visit? Is it too late to do that? Because it seems like.
Not if it's being tabled. I would say we could do that site walk.
Then at this point, would anyone like to make a site walk?
Move table to, the applicant requests discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to table it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, then, all those and, or any comment on tabling it? Anyone have anything to add? Yeah, I think you're right. Thank you. I, would you folks like a site walk? Should we take one? Fine.
Site walk, I would like a site walk.
Liza would? Do I hear a second? We have Joe. Do I need a majority or can I just?
No, actually, if it's, I mean, a, a site walk is like a planning board meeting.
Okay.
So if, if the board agrees to schedule a site walk and they just, most people just don't want to show up, you can still have it. The other option is for individual board members to go on their own, but, you know, you really should finish all your business on this item before you table discussion of it. So, I mean, it is appropriate to make a decision whether the board is going to officially schedule a site walk.
Okay. So we would need four to show anyways, right? To continue with.
It would be an official board meeting, yeah, you have four as a quorum.
Okay. We have two then. I would show up. Henry? Elaine? Okay, so we do have a majority, so let's schedule a site walk.
Madam Chairman, could, could we try to schedule it before the next submission?
Deadline?
In advance of the, the end of the month, so that we can make our submission, our final submission by, in order to get on the December agenda.
Okay.
You want, usually at this time of year, you're looking at Saturday morning, unless people are free, say at 4:00 in the afternoon. I mean, that's still getting too dark. I know, that's why.
Yeah, it's kind of dark at 4:00.
This Saturday is the 23rd. I really don't think you want to do it this Saturday after that.
Yeah.
No.
I'm okay for this Saturday, if that's what you want.
I can do this Saturday.
Saturday's fine with me. I believe I can do Saturday. I'm not available after 9:30, but you don't need me there if you go beyond that.
Okay. Is there a certain time everyone, it works better for them?
Whatever. I'm wide open Saturday.
Okay. Do you want?
Earlier, nine earlier?
Eight o'clock on a Saturday?
Eight o'clock. Yeah.
What time did you say?
8:00 AM.
Eight?
Nine.
Oh, nine. I'm still having coffee today.
That's fine.
Do you want to schedule it early? You have other appointments. I mean, yeah, it's not our favorite, but.
Nine's fine.
This, this coming Saturday?
Yes.
That's the 23rd.
The nine o'clock this Saturday? Does that work for you, John?
Yeah.
Does that work for the applicants? Nine o'clock this Saturday?
This Saturday.
Okay. Then we're going to have a site walk this Saturday at nine o'clock. Okay.
And we'll meet on Reef Road just west of the Ham driveway.
Okay.
What, what number Reef Road is that?
I, I don't have the number, but it's just west of the Ham house.
Like 10?
Six.
Six, okay. Now, before, we do have the motion on the table to table this, but I agree, we do need to, if anyone has any other comments before we wrap this up. Do you have any other comments or?
I have a question.
Yes.
We definitely, have we directed them to apply to, to, to resubmit as a private accessway or is that in limbo at this point?
It's in limbo.
But if they take that suggestion, am I correct, if they will have to have essentially a, two, they're applying for two things, they're applying for a certain amount of feet as a private road and the rest of it as a?
We typically would treat it as a concurrent review. They just have to adjust their application. Cover letter could reflect they're looking for two different things and, and they'd have to change their, their road section and show us where it would nip in to the private accessway section.
But does the first 50 feet have to meet the private road standards, 22 feet in all of it?
We'd have to, we'd have to massage that a little, because it would have to be private, yeah, it would have to be private road until you get past the Ham driveway and you haven't given them direction on whether that's a private road meeting the full standards or whether you might be willing to entertain waivers. But it does appear that the first 50 feet is not the problematic section.
Does that give the applicants enough to look at?
Exactly.
I think you probably need to go with the, with a, design a section of private road that meets the current standard.
To the Ham's driveway.
And then?
Maureen?
Yeah. Yes, Elaine, I'm sorry.
I think this may be one of their site walks.
Microphone?
Oh.
A microphone.
I know on prior site walks, we have talked about what we can and can't discuss at a site walk and the fact that the site walk is only for looking at the physical characteristics of the property. So I would appreciate some guidance as to whether on the site walk, we can talk about this question of whether we're more inclined to a private accessway or the private roadway. And it seems to me that that's kind of tricky and so we should know that in advance.
I would think that as a group, if you were out there negotiating what you were interested in, that would not be appropriate. If as individuals during the site walk, you looked at the area and said, this looks like an area to me that could meet the public road standard, that might give the applicant guidance.
But in fact, in the course of the site walk, we can't say. It seems to me that right now we have a consensus that what we think we're going to be asking for is this combined proposal that would have most of this as a private accessway. We couldn't, in the course of that site walk, talk about where our consensus might or might not have shifted.
I guess what I'm saying is you can't as a group reach consensus on this. Individuals could make comments that could aggregate during the site walk to give the applicant appropriate direction.
So we could be asked a question during the site walk? How do you feel?
You might just blurt something out.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't, but, but seriously, we can't have, we can't go to the site and have a discussion of this issue, which I think it may be very tempting to do.
Yeah, and I'm saying that that, again, having a consensus agreement at the site walk would not be appropriate.
Okay.
Yes, one, one point related to what Peter said about having a roadway until the Ham's house and then an accessway. I think I heard Chief Gleason say that he was okay with the narrower roadway, 18 feet to the Ham's house because of its proximity to Reef Road and Hydrant. So if we would be willing to waive the private road standards for just a few feet because of Chief Gleason's comments, you know, I don't know, I think that, that would be helpful to the applicant and it's something I would be willing to do.
That becomes a precedent and we don't really want to be doing that.
I know. I know that. So, something we can discuss maybe, but would we want to?
Victoria?
Discuss that ahead of time to give the applicant an idea of where to go?
Let's see how the board members feel.
From what I, from what I heard, and I may have misunderstood, in a private accessway, the first 50 feet needs to be paved to a different standard than the rest of the road. Am I correct or did I?
Yes, but the thing is usually the pavement is supposed to connect to the town road. So we're going, like I said, we're going to have to massage that a little.
So I guess I don't want to give somebody the idea that that's going to be the case until we see what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we're doing a site walk and I'm not willing to give anyone that direction until I see the site.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the applicant at this point? No. Then we will be having our site walk. We do have the motion on the table to table this to the next meeting. And did we have a second? We had a second from Elaine. Okay, then at this time, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion to table this to our next regularly scheduled meeting? Okay, all those opposed? So this has passed. This will be scheduled again for next month. I'm sorry, I don't have that date. You know what date that might be?
Yes, the December meeting is December 17th.
The 17th. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the comments that we have received tonight. It's been very beneficial. Okay. At this point then, at this point, we would hear from any public comments on items not on tonight's agenda. For the record, there is no one else in the chamber halls, so we'll pass on that and just go right into adjournment. And anyone want to adjourn? Yes, a second on adjournment? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
It's amazing. Thank you.